Call the meeting to order. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. All right, I am going to, so for anybody who wasn't listening to our last meeting, I scheduled this meeting because there were so many questions. Wanted to sort of have a continuation from four to five before the public hearing to allow for additional discussion on the articles of the Charter. And then we will have break at five, and then at 5:30 we'll come back for a public hearing. And then we are scheduling, we'll clock time Nancy and Tom about this fifth. Hopefully we may even do it earlier in the day, but we'll work that out for final deliberations and vote. Okay, sorry. Okay, so I'm gonna open it up and I am going, where we left off? Do we, I'm gonna hand it over to you Attorney Mednick.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much.
Happy to do so. My pleasure to be here. It's nice to meet so many people I've been working with over these years and actually over the last year or so and meet some of the members of the public who've been really serious and significant participants in this process. So thank you to everybody. It's a pleasure to be back in my, not hometown, but I spent four years of my life at the university here in Fairfield, so it's almost home for me.
Fairfield U?
Yeah, I went to Fairfield U.
Oh, okay, nice.
One quarter of the Jewish population at the time. That was my claim to fame. So we're gonna talk about Article Nine in the Charter, which is Budget Procedures. And this is a chapter that the Commission spent a fair amount of time on. I'm happy to defer to the members of the Commission who are here if they have any comments. If I stumble through and don't mention something that should be mentioned. We did an awful lot in this section. We spent a lot of time looking at it, meeting with the finance folks here in town. And we also have particular expertise on the Commission. We have John Motola, who's a member of the Board of Finance, and others who've been involved in government at different levels for a period of time. And what we do here is, you know, there are added words in this Charter. I've heard that the Charter is longer than the prior Charter, the current Charter. And some of these words that we've added to the Charter really address the issue of, how shall I put it, transparency and clarity for the public. Because the Charter is a document that serves different purposes. Since we're here today and probably gonna lecture a little bit or probably philosophize a little bit. This Charter is for you as the executive body. It's for the Board of Finance, it's for the other elected officials, the department heads, the people who work here for the RTM that is the legislative body. And remember, there's only two mandatory provisions in the Charter. One is the legislative body and one is the executive body. But it's here for the public as well. It's here for the public to be able to understand what the processes are, how the processes work. And so very often in the charters that I draft, the charters I work on, I put provisions in that are clarifying, that are introductory. And that's what this starts with, is what the budget process is. And it starts with an important theme of cooperation. I've been putting in charters recommending, I've gotta be careful with my words. I don't impose things in charters, I recommend things for charters. But I've recommended cooperation clauses in all my charters. And they're in many of my charters, the charters I've worked with throughout the state of Connecticut, and that's where you start your budget process. You start your budget process working with the Budget Director and with the departments. And it simply opens up and says there needs to be cooperation. When the first select person is seeking information, or the Board of Select Persons, or the Board of Finance, or the RTM, it's your obligation to provide the information in that process and make sure they get the information. We also have language in here. Is the language necessary? You can argue that it's not. But I think it's important in a constitutional document to say certain things to the public. And one of the things that I like to recommend, and this Commission has approved, is the concept that this is a public record. It is a public record. It doesn't need to be stated in the Charter that it is, but when somebody is reading in the Charter, it makes them understand what it is. Most people don't think in those terms. It's important to, I think, identify what this document is. We talk about public engagement in here, the importance of making sure the public is engaged. And we have a provision in here regarding the creation of a budget calendar. I think you do want anyhow informally, but the Charter kind of mandates it as a provision that requires, that requires, not approval, but requires a discussion between the various budget bodies at the beginning of the year so that the public knows what the flow is and what the process is without having to read the Charter. It starts off at the end. I didn't change that. I sometimes, I thought about moving your date of annual budget meeting from the beginning to the end of the document, and you could still do that if the Board of Selectment, I think it makes sense. But I left it at the beginning because it gets people a sense of this is when we have to be done. This is when we have to finish this document. This is when the budget becomes effective. But then it goes from there into the annual budget estimates. The annual budget estimates are submitted by all the town officials and departments of the town. We call them the submitting parties for purposes of the budget. And they, we don't have, you don't have a particularly detailed set of submission documents. In some of my communities, we have very, very detailed requirements in the Charter. I think that the conclusion from, based on our discussions, was that you have a pretty good process in Fairfield at this point. It's been handled well. There have been no real issues with it, and therefore let's maintain a kind of minimalist approach to it. And so the first step in the process is really the submission of the documents, and those submissions take place not later than the second Tuesday, second Monday in March. And from there, the process moves on to the second step. And that's when the first select person submits the budget to the Board of Select Persons. And we have a couple of differences in that process at this, and that would be by, again, the, not later than the, when is that? Oh, the second Monday in March. It goes to the Board of Selectmen, and at that time, the first select person will give an address on the budget recommendation. Again, we did not put a lot of details on what should be in that address, but presumably you'd wanna have enough in that address so that the members of the, your colleagues on the Board of Selectmen, Select Persons, and the members of the RTM and the members of the Board of Finance, who will be assembled for this purpose, will understand what it is that you are doing and what you're proposing. At that time, the third step, which falls right with the second step, is this new concept, it's not a new concept, I think it's been used in Fairfield before, but it's being codified for the first time, is the concept of a joint meeting. It's a series of joint meetings, actually, and that is a change that we made based on some testimony from the public hearing process, where the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and in my view, hopefully the RTM, would work together to listen to the department heads, the submitting parties, the department heads, present their budgets in the aggregate. Right now, it is done multiple times in the process, and I think that the intention here was to try to end up in a situation where, in a given timeframe for this process, that you would have the ability to have everybody in a room. And it would be the three of you, it would be, I think the third one's up there, the three members of the Board of Select Persons, the Board of Finance, and a contingent of the RTM, because I think that some people were concerned that having thirty, forty, whatever number of the RTM at this meeting would be a very difficult enterprise. And so we talk about establishing rules that allow for participation of perhaps an RTM committee of jurisdiction, depending on the subject matters, that would be before the body. The meeting is convened by the first select person and then turned over to the Chair of the Board of Finance, who then facilitates the meetings. It's not one meeting, it will be a series of meetings. And the, little sidebar that I wanna make here is, one of the misconceptions or conceptions that people have is that somehow this is intruding on the authority of the other bodies, decision-making bodies, on the Board of Finance and on the RTM. One thing the Charter makes absolutely clear is that both bodies retain full plenary jurisdiction to conduct as many hearings and meetings as they would like on the budget. If they wanna go through and duplicate what happens at this initial joint meeting, they have that privilege and that power. And there's nothing in this Charter that takes that away. And I think it's important to emphasize that not one iota of authority has been removed from either of those bodies. So there's plenty of opportunity for both bodies to go through full questioning of the department heads as many times as they'd like, frankly, within reason.
Can I ask a question just about that specifically? So I appreciate what you're saying. Thank you. I appreciate what you're saying, that it doesn't take away any of the authority, but can you explain exactly where the language is? And I wanna reiterate that my questions come because ultimately if we, if this moves forward, we're gonna have to be responsible for understanding why we supported the language that we did. And some of it is just still confusing to me, and this is definitely one of those areas. There's language here, and I don't know if it was from the previous draft, but that the, it wouldn't be, that the subsequent meeting should be called to order by the first select person. Why is that necessary?
Because it's the first select person's meeting where they're making the presentation. Remember, the presentation is upon submission to the Board of Selectmen. And so the first select person is gonna be speaking, but convenes the meeting and will simply turn it over to the.
So every, every time the Board of, the way I'm reading it, so correct my understanding, is that anytime the Board of Finance, for instance, wants to meet, it has to go through the Board of, the first selectman, you're nodding no. So explain, that's.
I didn't nod, I didn't nod at all.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's the opening of, it's the opening of the meeting. I believe that's what it says.
No, it's a subsequent meeting. It does, it does say subsequent meeting. So, you know, that's, that's what it says, and the Board of Selectmen.
Does that just mean the Board of Select, sorry, the joint budget presentation meetings? Is that where you wrote that?
It's, yeah, it's the joint presentation meetings. And so the, it was just set up, again, since it's the Board of Selectmen essentially, that is, it's.
The first line.
The budget is before the Board of Selectmen. The jurisdiction, the Board of Finance doesn't technically have jurisdiction at this point.
Until we vote on it.
The RTM doesn't, until you vote on it and send it to them.
Correct.
And so just as a matter of protocol, I recommended it. The Board of Selectmen is entitled to modify that, so you can modify it so that if the first select person wasn't there, or you don't think it's a necessary function, you can change that. It was done mainly as a protocol because it is a Board of Select Persons meeting, in effect.
Which then leads into a question that I had submitted about some of the language. So if we, if.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Can I just make something clear? Make sure that you're clear on this, Nancy, and that is that once the Board of Select Persons submits it to the Board of Finance, the Board of Finance, of course, has any and all meetings that they so desire, and they run those meetings. So at that point, it's not being run by the first select person, just to be clear.
Right, and after, that's after the vote of the Board of Selectmen. So I think what, the way it was described to me, I watched all the meetings, but the way it was described to me afterward, and it's something that I communicated with the Commission, because obviously it's like Groundhog Day. I mean, it's present the budget to the Board of Selectmen, present the budget to the Board of Finance, present the budget to the RTM. It's so incredibly repetitive, and all the department heads have to line up and do it three times. It's maddening, really. It's unfair to our department heads who work really hard and have to, you know, run departments. And I just thought it just, and I thought it would be beneficial to the bodies as well because we would all be together collaborating. So I would give the budget presentation, which would, I guess, according to Attorney Mednick, which is formally before the Board of Selectmen in our Charter, but everybody would be there. So I would do my PowerPoint presentation, talk about that. And then as the, according to what you wrote, you guys wrote in the Charter, the budget meetings would be set up by the CFO, the scheduler. So whatever night, so maybe there's five or six departments or whatever on the first night. Then after the presentation by me, maybe, you correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Mednick, then it gets handed over to the Chairperson of the Board of Finance, and that person facilitates the Q and A with all three bodies.
Correct.
And then.
Including your colleagues and yourself, if you had questions, yes.
Right, so then that's finished, and then that goes for a series of two to three weeks, I believe. And then the budget goes back now officially to the Board of Selectmen, just the three of us. We discuss, deliberate, and vote. And then it gets handed to the Board of Finance, and they do the same thing. They have follow-up, they ask different department heads to come back if they have additional questions, and things of that nature.
Exactly. The idea, I think the theory behind this is that this would be an iterative process. So that you have the gross, the global meeting at the beginning, the Board of Finance would then decide, do they need to have another global meeting? Do they need to have everybody back in there?
Meetings.
Meetings, series of meetings.
Meetings, lots of meetings.
Words count, yes, I'm told. And they'd have a series of meetings. And so the, but again, there's no prohibition for having as many meetings as they'd like when it comes right down to it.
Right.
I do have a question for the first selectwoman, Levkowitz, because you did raise a question that really should be talked about right now. The concept of the proposed budget versus budget recommendations versus executive.
I wanna clarify, because I think in theory, all of this sounds good. The language is so confusing to me because we refer to it different, in different ways. And I think this is part of the extra words that aren't necessarily helping us clarify to get to a better place of understanding. So for me, it's the clunkiness in the language.
Yeah, and I'm more than happy, and I'm sure the Commission is more than, and your colleagues would be more than happy to hear what thoughts you have on how it should be clarified. There's different approved budgets in the process.
Right.
And one of the most confusing things I find, one of the most confusing things I find as I go through budgets throughout the state is what are they called when they're in a certain period of time?
Right.
So what we tried to do is, what I recommended, and what we're trying to do, and it may not be perfect, so if you have some ideas on this, please lay it out. We tried to define the product that came out of the Board of Select Persons as the executive, what do you call it, the executive budget, the first, you got the first select person's budget recommendation, then you have the executive budget that is recommended by the executives, you, to the Board of Finance. Then the Board of Finance comes out with their budget, and their budget is then called the proposed town budget, because they are then sending it to the RTM. So I thought the titles made sense. If they don't make sense, let's talk about it, and let's see what we can do to make them work. But there was, there was a method to the madness.
Tom, did you have something?
I do.
Okay.
A few things, actually, on this. One thing I think it needs to be explicitly stated in this section is that by votes of any of the town bodies, the budget process, you know, can be changed, number one. Number two, the way of looking at this, in some regards, there's some aspects of it that are different, is that we used to do it in the manner where the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance had joint hearings chaired by the Chairman of the Board of Finance, who would hand the meeting over to the first select person for their budget presentation. I thought, actually, that piece of the budget process worked better than what we currently do, where it's before the Board of Selectmen and then before the Board of Finance separately. That's a personal bias that I have, just based on my experience doing it. I thought it was more efficient, and actually allowed for more robust discussion. And I also think that having that aspect of the budget process chaired by the Board of Finance makes more sense, because in essence, they're reviewing the first select person's budget, and it allows for a freer flow of information. So I like that aspect of it. Couple things. I do think we need to make sure that we unequivocally state, like I said earlier, that the different branches of government have the autonomy to change it, number one. Number two, I think that this budget calendar is too compressed, starting in mid-March with the budget submission with a joint meeting, along with an early May deadline in order to submit a budget to the state. That's too tight. So basically what you're doing is you're saying, hey, they have the right to change the budget process, but we're really not gonna give you time to do so. So I would back up the start date of the budget process to an earlier date akin to what we have now. The other thing I would, and why do I think that? Because we're adding a level of complexity here as well. That level of complexity being the first select person is gonna present the budget proposal to the three bodies at once, which I actually, for that one meeting, I actually liked that. I think the PowerPoint presentation that's put together, the twenty-five or thirty pages, and actually the public discourse of that first meeting, that makes a lot of sense doing it to the three complete bodies. That doesn't bother me at all. I think that's really good. But when it comes back, let's say, to the Board of Finance to a vote, or it comes back to the RTM for a vote, it could be a very different document, because the other town bodies have gotten additional information and changed some of the numbers. So they're gonna need time to digest the fact that they're looking at a different budget that they were originally presented to. And I think you need to give them that time. Those would be my specific comments at this point in time.
So if I could just respond, I, so if I could just respond, I know the Chair and Attorney Mednick asked me about this. And right now, we start the meeting at the end of February. We start our budget meetings. And they go for, what, three days? A lot of times, as you know, we're getting financial information that's changing, insurance information, all this stuff. So to me, it made sense to move it to the first week of March. It's only a week off. And because.
No, it's actually the second week in March in the proposal, from what I, from what Attorney Mednick said.
It says, no, 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 what it says, it says no later then. And.
Well, I don't, yeah, but I don't wanna compress it that far.
Well, it would, in my opinion, what I conveyed to the Commission was I wanted to start the first week of March, not in that's only a one-week differential, but it allows us to have some additional information and better budget numbers.
I honestly don't think, first of all, I think, based on my past experience, right, the information we're waiting on at that point in time should be limited to health insurance experience. The fact that the actuaries came late with the information related to pension and related to OPEB was the fact that it was their first year, and quite frankly, I don't think we pushed them hard enough, because they do it based on June 30th information from the prior year. So in past years, there's been no reason that that information can't be available and baked into the budget by November or December.
Right, but what.
So the real information we're waiting on is health insurance. And by the way, that information changes everywhere from, it basically changes monthly if you're tracking the experience all that closely. So literally, the Board of Finance is voting on different experience numbers than even the RTM is voting on, and we've had that in the past.
Right, but the dates, though, but the dates that you're talking about, so again, we started the end of February and wrapped up, I believe, on March 2nd or something, the Board of Selectmen. So this really is essentially, and again, it says no later than the second Monday. I mean, if you wanted, if you wanna move it up the week, I intended to start it in the first week of March. And obviously, it's compressed because you're having joint meetings where people are all together getting the presentation, not just on the budget, but also from all the department heads.
But that's the point. You're assuming that they're gonna stay, and I'm not saying you, I'm saying that the document assumes that you're gonna stay with the compressed schedule. And what it's assuming is it says, hey, we're giving you the schedule, it's compressed, so we're gonna start later, right? But then we're turning around and we're saying, but we're gonna give you the opportunity, Board of Finance, you know, Board of Selectmen, RTM, to have additional meetings. You can have as many meetings as you want, but by the way, you've gotta do it within this compressed timeframe. So while we're giving them a write, we're not actually giving the timeframe to actually use the write. And what I'm saying is, if we give, by the end of February, the last day in February, we should be presented with a budget so that the three town bodies can review the budget, whatever that means, I think that that's appropriate.
So you're only talking about less than a week more time, and it's still ending, or it's ending actually a week later than it normally does. So you're actually adding two additional weeks with your proposal to the budget season.
I don't, why, hey, Brendan, why are we saying it's, and you may be right, why are we saying it's adding a week later? Because I thought that was actually statutorily mandated by when the RTM needs to vote and then when the Board of Finance needs to set the mill rate. So I didn't think that was movable, to be candid with you.
No, I think they moved, didn't you move it to the.
Well, they're all movable, yeah.
Right. So I think we typically, we typically have it the first week of May, and this was, this language is saying the second week of May.
Yeah, the determination.
See, I was always, go ahead, Attorney Mednick, I was always told, because one of the problems we've always had with the budget process, quite frankly, has been that our budget process, and we were told, I thought I was told that statutorily it needed to be done in early May.
No.
And the problem we've always had, or the concern we've always had, is that we don't get the state's actual approved budget until, you know, the June timeframe. So that's always been something that we've struggled with, with how many funds are coming from the state.
Well, different years.
Because that can move around.
Every off-year is May, yeah.
The May and June switches and the general something. But one of the points, Mr. Flynn, that I would make is, last night, just last night, we went through the budget process in another one of my municipalities in a charter revision, and we pushed them up to June 1st, one of the larger cities. I've tried to push my municipalities into June with their budgets. The real issue for towns on the later date has to do with getting your tax bills out.
Right, that's the problem.
That's always been the issue. In my day, twenty-five years ago, when I was on the legislative body in New Haven, it was hard to get the tax bills out. It's easier now than it was in the nineteen ninety's.
Well, actually, Dave Kaye did comment, I think, on this at some point.
Yeah, and that's why we kept the dates in May.
Saying he needed that time. He couldn't go later than the second week of May because he needed the time to get the tax bills prepared and get them out.
That's the constriction. It's not a legal constriction, it's really a question of how quickly can, when can the taxpayer get the bill out? That's the bottom line.
So the second week of May, you're having an extra week on the front end, so you have an extra week. You're adding an extra week. And technically, the Board of Selectmen takes it up just for three days at the end of February. This would just be the first week of March. It's really not, it's one half dozen of the other.
Yeah, show to me that we're not, here's what I request. I don't wanna compress the timeframe of the actual bodies being asked to review the budget. I think that's very important. So as long as it's the same amount of time, same, then I'm, then I'm fine with it, okay? But I wanna give them time because I think what's key to, for me, what's key to this is flexibility for them to handle the budget however they believe for the given year that budget should be handled. To me, that's very important because, having done this for a number of years, you never know what's gonna come up within that timeframe. The other question I'll make, and it's more a general comment because I've been asked about this by members of the public, is why is it necessary to mandate how the budget is taken up in the Charter? I think because we need a fallback position, because there's been times when the various bodies did not agree. And I think it's very important, given the deadlines that we have, to get the tax bills out and everything that we just talked about, that we have a fallback position, that if the bodies don't agree on a different methodology, then this is the methodology that's gonna be put in place to ensure that an annual budget process takes place. That's my own opinion, and that's why I would say it's important to lay something out in the Charter.
If I may, ma'am.
Sure, of course.
In my experience, and you're absolutely right, Mr. Flynn, the, in most Charter, comprehensive Charter revisions that I'm involved in, budget is usually. comprehensive charter revisions that I'm involved in, budget is usually the first place we start. And some places have much more draconian provisions in, uh, than you do, and much more detail than you do. Um, it did not appear that that was the direction we were going to take, and, and I think you just take the appropriate, uh, direction for the culture of the town you live in. So-
Yeah.
Let me point out two, two things that I hope will, uh, make you feel more comfortable. One is Section 9.4B of the proposed charter, uh, is also language that's in the current charter that permits the Board of Select Persons with the approval of the Board of Finance to vary the procedure for the charter process. So, that was, is there now, that will remain in the charter.
Can you talk about that?
You might want to, we might want to expand that.
That's-
Well, let me, let me just say-
Well, I think you did that, was that off-ramp you said? I remember you guys talking about it.
The second point, yeah, tell me what you think that means. What do you mean by expanding?
What I'm saying is that basically says the Board of Selectmen can change it, and they need the approval of the Board of Finance. What if the Board of Finance wants to change it? What if the RTM wants to change it? I, I would like it expressly said that there's nothing in this section that precludes any of the town bodies, any of those three approving town bodies, to hold their whole, their own meetings if they believe that's necessary. I think that's key to preserve segregation of duties and separation of powers between the three bodies. That's all.
I think they can, they can decide their procedures, for sure, but you'd want to have some rule of law that governs your, um, your budget process. And so, so-
I agree, which, this is the rule, this is the rule of law, but they have the right, basically, I want them to say, they have the right to hold their own sessions if they believe-
That's already in there. That's in our proposed document.
Yeah, that's in there, Tom. They talked about that quite a bit at that meeting.
Yeah, which part is in there? Because I, I, I might have missed it, and I apologize if I did. Or it might have, to Nancy's point, it might have been, you know, it gets into legalese and stuff like that.
Section nine.
Section 9.5A, further examination, uh, 333, it's a new section. It's brand new. The Board of Finance-
Yeah, read that to me first.
Section 9.5A.
Yeah.
Further, it says the Board of Finance may hold meetings to review the proposed executive budget, okay, the budget that you submit to them, as it determines necessary prior to the public hearing. So, they get to set as many meetings as they want. They set their own procedures.
What about the RTM?
Then you go to the RTM.
Same language.
It's the same thing. Uh, let's see where that language is.
Okay, good. I missed it.
This is where-
It's in 9.8A.
If I may.
9.6A.
I'm sorry, 9.6A, you're right. This is where I think it becomes important to understand what budgets we're talking about, the proposed executive budget, and, and maybe that would help clarify or cover some of the concerns around this.
Well, that's what it says.
I'm just saying, I think that we refer to the different-
The title of the budget changes because when the budget goes from the Board of Select Persons to-
Right.
It's going to be called this.
Right, but so, if, if Tom is suggesting that any step of the process, this is a very specific phase in the process. Is that what you're asking? If you, because-
No, I-
No.
That's not what he was saying.
Yeah, no, I think, thank you, Nancy. I think what I was concerned about is pretty well laid out when I look at that now. I didn't read it that way before, so that, that's my error in terms of reading that. But I, you know, my point still stands. I just want them, each of the bodies, to be able to have their autonomy to review the budget separately and however they see fit. That's important, in my opinion.
That is very, I would say that is very clear, but obviously.
Does it help for the reader to understand, again, forget this circle of people? Is it necessary to have a line, and this is something we can take away and think about, where it, it goes from being the executive budget, proposed executive budget? Does it help to have that added line to, at what point it changes?
We can do that. We can define them, even. We can even lay, we can lay out a section that defines the, the different budgets. Mr. Chair?
It seems logical to me.
Yeah. All right. Can I just point out one other point in, in response to, uh, Select Person Flynn? In addition to the variation procedure that you have in the charter, um, and I think the Town Attorney will throw something at me when I point this out, but it's a law, and I thought I'd mention it. The RTM has the ability to amend the charter for budget purposes with a two-thirds vote. Speaker Ritter, uh, who represents a lot of Boards of Education, uh, put this through back, you might have been in the legislature, in 2018. It's a very unique charter provision. It's the only provision of charter revision where you don't have to have Brian running the show for nine or 10 months. The RTM, with a two-thirds vote, so it's really, in most RTMs, would be a bipartisan vote, has the ability to change the schedule. So, you have two protections here. If you, as a Board of Select Persons, decide, these are very tight dates, or these are, the dates are too far apart, we want to change them. You have the variation provision where you guys can come up with a, a change, and then you have the more radical amendment to the charter. That's not an amendment to the charter, that's amendment to your procedures. You can actually take the words of this charter and change them by RTM action. So, I just wanted to respond to, uh, Mr. Flynn, since you raised that issue.
Steve, if I may, I'm not going to throw anything at you. I think it's an excellent point, and it just might be useful someday in the future should the RTM and the town in general find it necessary or in its best interest to extend that second week in May deadline by a week or two.
Exactly.
Because the budget's coming out from Hartford or something along those lines.
Absolutely.
So, it's, it's a very good point.
Yeah. Okay, uh, where were we? So, were you okay now on the difference? We'll do something, um, so, let me just suggest, let me just do a, a step back for a moment on a teachable moment here for the, for the executive body. What you're going to be doing, if you want these changes, is you're going to be adopting a resolution that will say to the Charter Revision Commission that we want you to look at the definitions, uh, to make the definitions more user-friendly, whatever the right term would be, uh, to look at the timeframes, et cetera. So, just to give you an idea, that's, that's the legislative action that you're going to be coming up with, is a resolution that, uh, gives their, them the ability to do those things. When it goes back to them, let me just explain this, but I don't know if I did it the other night. They can only address the issues that come up that you raise, that the majority of this body sends back to them. So, the notion of the public hearing tonight is to listen to the members of the public. If there are things that you think are constructive and useful, you would then send those items back to them to think about and come back to you for the final action. Uh, but they can, they can't act on anything new. There's no more new things at the Charter Commission. They can only respond to the issues you, you present to them at this point.
Okay.
Which can be new-
Can be new.
Which can be new things, and is it an omnibus recommendation, or do we have to kind of itemize it out?
The way I've, um, the way I've done it in the municipalities I do is, it's basically a resolution, paragraph one, we want you to look at chapter one, this section. Paragraph two, we want you to look at chapter two, that section.
And it, and reviewing of is appropriate language rather than specific?
You could be specific.
Okay.
You could be specific. But here's my, the point I want to make to you is that if you're too specific, then they can only come back with, uh, if you want five people on a board, as opposed to the three they put on, they can only say, we're rejecting that.
So broad is okay.
We're going to, yeah, so broader is better because my hope would be that there'd be a, a process between the Board of Select Persons and the Charter Commission during this period of time where you can try to come to a reconciliation, uh, where you actually come up with something that would be approved by your body.
But so, what would that process look like? Some-
Whatever, whatever-
But meaning, since it can't be a, it would have to be a special meeting if it's-
You, you do it in a meeting context. You can be invited to, what you can be done is the, the Charter Commission will be meeting, the Charter Commission can invite members of the Board of Select Persons to the charter meeting. Wouldn't be a meeting of the Board of Select Persons because you, you have no formal role. It would be an informal discussion. So, you would be testifying, speaking, mediating in this process. That's the way, um, I generally work.
Thank you.
It's easier with three of you as opposed to 30 members of the New Haven Board of Alders. So, uh, okay. So, I think we kind of, in a way, we kind of run through the process, uh, because it goes to the Board of Finance, the Board of Finance does what they need to do, they then make their proposal to the RTM, uh, and at that point, it's over unless there's a referendum. Um, and, and as I pointed out, uh, to, uh, I will talk to, uh, in a few moments, in response to some Commissioner, uh, I'm sorry, Select Person Leftwood's questions, we kind of moved the, the referendum process into the RTM section to show how the legislative process really works. Uh, because it's, the referendum is the end of the legislative process. Unlike other municipalities, there's no veto, there's no executive veto of RTM action. The veto would be a referendum, um, that would knock down the action of the RTM. The provisions on appeals to the Board of Finance remain the way they are now, and, uh, I think that's pretty much it. Nothing else really changes. So, it's a, you know, it's a multi-step process. The last thing I want to point out in the charter that exists, that wasn't here, or isn't here now, is you do not have a periodic review provision in your charter. You've gone 16 years or so, um, without a charter revision. And, uh, as I joked with the Commission, I used to call it the Mednick Full Employment Act of having periodic reviews, but at my age, I'm really hoping to be a professional shuffleboard player 10 years from now, uh, or a professional rock and roll performer. We'll, we'll figure out what that is. What we did hear is not a hard 10 years, but every 10 years, you need to consider whether you should do it. So, instead of a mandatory charter revision, I think the Commission, I won't speak for them, felt that reminding you that it should be done is, is a, a good idea, and it's up to the three of you to decide whether you want to do it.
For future.
For future.
Yeah, I remember that meeting, you guys talked about that.
One, one other item is the town seal, right? So, so the language was removed requiring the town seal and allowing for that to be created by ordinance.
Yay.
Because the town seal is kind of baked into your charter, and it was, uh, I don't think it's a popular seal, from what I hear.
Uh, I've been told.
Which actually leads to one of the questions I had asked you about other ordinances. Is it now an appropriate time to ask that?
Madam, uh, for Select Person, can I start answering her question?
Absolutely.
So, I had asked about existing, uh, I had asked about, was there other discussion from the Commission about other things that could have been put into, taken out of the charter and put into ordinances into the town code? Is there any, was there any, that was something that was discussed at the beginning.
No, I think it's a great question. And as the Commissioners will tell you, um, well, if, if, uh, we didn't do much of that in this process. If I had my druthers, uh, and we focused on some other aspects of the charter, I would move most of your departments, um, out of the charter. I'd move most of your boards and commissions out of the charter. I would, uh, if there are, I would not mark, uh, what I would try to do on the department side, give you my philosophy of what a charter should work on, and I will tell you, no one has picked up on my philosophy yet because everybody's afraid to do it. And if you think changing the size of an RTM is difficult, try getting rid of departments out of the charter and boards and commissions out of the charter. You start dealing with TERF, it becomes very, very difficult. So, it's a, it's a big issue. But I've recommended many times-
And we've pared it down.
Quite a bit in towns. Uh, City of Hartford only has five commissions in their charter, um, and they have two or three that are mandatory. Um, uh, and so what I've tried to do is to move the cities and, and towns into a position where, look, there's some things you want to have, that you need to have, that you're not going to take out of your charter. You're not taking planning and zoning out of your charter. You're not taking, uh, in some places, a civil service commission out of a charter. You're not taking ethics. Ethics should be mandated by a charter, in a charter. So, so the first category is what needs to be in the charter? What are so sacrosanct? What are so important that you need to define them and say they're X number of people, and that's what it's going to be until 10 years from now, and we can decide to change it? Versus, we believe these commissions should exist, but we'll leave it to the RTM, to the, the chief executive and the legislative body to create the legislation that would ultimately establish the Board or Commission. So, if I had my druthers, the charter would move all those things out. Uh, I'm telling you, that would be a real, direct, difficult process, and I would think you'd want to dedicate an entire charter to that process. And that's just the boards and commissions. Then you get to the departments. I actually have moved, uh, a lot of departments out of charters and, uh, created categories. There shall be departments that provide police services, fire services, health services, things like that. You don't need to create some of those, but then other towns say, got to have a police chief in my charter. We can't not have a police chief in the charter. Fine, then leave it in. If there are things, again, town, it's culture by culture by culture, in town by town by town, um, it'll be different in every town. So, my general recommendation is to move things out.
Philosophically, I understand where you are, but can, and can you share, either you, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, no, I'd love to weigh in on this, actually.
That'd be great.
So, we did, um, from the outset, kind of look at this and said, maybe we could start with like a, a form of zero-based budgeting, if you will, and just build the, the charter from the, the ground up, but realized quickly that was going to take way too much time. And through the public input, we, we learned that there were a lot of sacred, uh, areas that it would be difficult to touch. So, one of the things that did appeal to me that, you know, Steve was just touching on is moving most of the boards and commissions to ordinances because it would give a lot more flexibility. But we had a lot of pushback. And in fact, what we heard on boards and commissions is that people wanted more added rather than anything taken away. And by the, so what we did is we took a step back when we were reviewing all of the submissions and testimony from, from the public officials and said, let's look at the big picture items that we need to address first, i.e. the town, the form of government and the budgeting process, and see kind of what, what we have left in our capacity to address. And quite frankly, we ran out of time when we got to the boards and commissions and to, to those other areas. And it would be, as we've said, uh, on Monday, and I think Attorney Mednick alluded to it earlier today, it would be something, maybe in a couple of years, if this board so desired, they would say, look, we want a Charter Revision Commission just to look at boards and commissions to see which ones are necessary, which ones aren't, which ones could be moved to ordinances? Could we do that? The same thing with, um, the town departments. I mean, it was so thorny in terms of trying to unpack it all and make sure that we weren't missing something if we were taking part of it out, the whole thing out, what, so that we, we really couldn't get into that. We didn't have the time. So, we wanted to, we wanted to pick the areas that we could do right and, um, and thoroughly, and I think that we, we did that. And so, when we got to the boards and commissions, we realized we couldn't do that. There were certain areas that were flagged to us that said, look, this is truly holding us up because it is in the charter. The most popular example being the engineering requirement for the head of the Public Works Department. And so, we did address that, but also there were some kind of unintended consequences of that as well, which bore out through the process, and we realized we needed to make some adjustments to make sure that there was some engineering references in another area of the, of the charter itself. So, it, it, you know, it's everything you begin to unpack, and in a perfect world, you would move more to the, the ordinances. We just couldn't get there, is the answer. I don't know if any other Commissioners have, uh, anything to weigh in on that.
No, I think that's spot on.
Can I, I appreciate that point of view and that perspective. I think one of the issues that was raised, um, in speaking to residents is that what you do for one, it's why people were encouraging to have it in the charter, like, I know, for instance, the Racial Equity and Justice Commission, because the others are in the charter, it then becomes, well, if that's, you know, so I think there, I, I appreciate you saying that it should be looked at in its entirety, the way we, we do boards and commissions, which then leads me to wonder, is 10 years too long, given the current times that we're living in? I understand you can do it before, but should we, by mandate, be looking at it in five years, given how fast the world is changing? 10 years feels, as a comment-
It's your call. I mean, I, I would do a charter revision every year. I enjoy doing that. It's a wonderful meeting, but-
Fantastic.
No.
I would disagree.
Thank you.
Which, but it also, it does then go to the other question, one of the other questions I had, yeah.
Here's what I think you need to think about. Am I on? I think I'm on. Is, and I do talk about this, I was thinking about this based on the questions you asked me today, and that is this. Some towns actually create boards of select people, mayors, whoever the chief executives are, put together groups if there's a concern. If this is an issue you want to look at, you put together some working groups of the town that are broadly representative, that have, we try to avoid as much as you can partisan bickering, but you bring all the partisans into the table to sit and work on it. You bring advocates in, because a lot of departments have advocates, some you may not even know about. And you work on these things, and you say, here's our broad philosophy of where we're thinking about going with the reorganization of our government. And because that's what it is. It's a reorganization. It's a modernization of your government. Because we want to have the ability to have our government looked at on an annual basis through budget. That's what you really should be doing, is you should have departments and between ordinances and budgets, you'd be able to figure out how your budgets in your departments are going to work. Then when you come up with your structure, and you come up with an understanding of where you want to go, then you convene a charter. Because the Charter Commission, one of the things, people think Charter Commissions can solve all the problems of the world. Charter commissions are of limited duration. The max you can have is 16 months. Most of them don't run that long, including this one, because you have election cycles that you're trying to achieve, and you don't, you know, you could always exceed the election cycle, go to the 16 months, and then put it on a ballot a year later, but then the document becomes stale a year later. Or you can put in a special election, but then you gotta get 15 percent of the populace out to vote, to make it valid. Hartford tried to move in 2000, year 2000, to a strong mayor form of government, and it won with 75 or 80 percent of the vote, 11 percent, 9 percent, whatever the number was. It was invalid, and we did it two years later. And so, that's my thought, is that if you have these thoughts, what Brian was talking about, I think that you try to do it informally, and if there's a concept that comes together, you then call the charter, whether it's for departments, whether it's for something else. Bridgeport, John Motola, Commissioner Motola is here, he may remember this. I don't know if he was in government in the 1980s, but the 1980s and early 1990s, Bridgeport, I think.
No.
John, it was more like the 70s, right? It's like the 70s.
He was still in junior high school. Okay, I'm sorry. Then, you know, they did, they did annual, I'm sorry.
He's fine. No, he said, I wish.
I wish, okay. They did, they did, were doing annual charters. It's actually the first time I actually did charter work. They brought me in on a specific thing. And what I found, which was interesting, is when you segment like that, it's a problem because, well, we need to look at this section to make this section work.
Right.
And that's the problem. But with the departments, those tend to be in one area, and then you would figure out what you need to do. So, that's kind of the answer to that question.
I'd also like to add, too, I think that any future body that looks at this, including you know, an ad hoc group that's going to lay the groundwork for a Charter Revision Commission, has a wealth of information based on the data that we collected, and it will remain on the website. I think that the grid was a really helpful tool, and I know people, I see some in this room here, too, took a lot of time to put some great thoughts together, and they're valuable. But, you know, quite frankly, you know, we just could not get to all of them, and it doesn't mean that they did not hold a lot of water, and we respected them, but.
I would think, given this, two things. It's incumbent, I would think, on our body, the Board of Selectmen, to convene groups to look at that specifically, at the boards of, and boards and commissions and the way it works, and the language, and the department heads. But it scares me that you use the term, the document would be stale, because presumably this is going to be something that, I know, so just be careful, because.
I gotta watch myself with you.
Why is it stale?
Because this is something that we're signing on that presumably is going to have life, so.
The document is not stale. It's the concept of the urgency of approving it. If a document's sitting around for a year, it's a function of how do you excite the electorate?
Right.
If the document's sitting on a shelf somewhere, there's no, there's no other way.
Well, presumably, we're taking more time, which does lead to another question I had, which I had submitted. What else would you have covered as a commission? Because we did hear that a few times the other night. We ran out of time. If we only had more time, you're saying it here. Are there things that you didn't get to besides these two that you really wish that you could have as a commission?
No, I mean, I think academically, it would actually be quite an exercise to spend about two or three years doing it, to be honest and straight-faced with you. But to list them all, I, you know, the follow-up question in my mind would be, if given more time, could we do something, and what would that be? I think, you know, my grandmother always said, don't let perfection be the evil of good. And I think that that's kind of where we are. And I'm not saying that the document is not great. I'm just saying that what we covered is a good amount of what was to be covered. And so, I think that this is a great step in getting to where you want to go. We did take a lot of time, you know, in an ordered amount of time, according to our counsel, in receiving information, almost too much is what he was saying in comparison to other Charter Revision Commissions, but we wanted to make sure that we heard from everyone. And we sought input from every aspect of town government and anybody from the public who we could encourage to come and contact us. So, I don't, I don't think, given more time, that we would, we would be able to address more thoroughly. And, you know, I do fear, not for staleness, but for actually reaching the 15 percent threshold of putting it on a referendum. So, you'd then be talking about two years from, you know, another year plus from November, so.
The document would doubt be stale. It was a question of the timing of it and having the population know what was going on. Do you want me to continue, or, I know it's 5:00.
Yeah. I know, it's good discussion. What do you got?
I submitted lots of nice questions.
I have a bunch of questions I'd be happy to try to answer.
All right. How about if we go till 10 after? How about that? I mean, even if we start a little bit past 5:30, so go to quarter after. How about that?
Thank you. And the other thing I'll say is that I am going to be paying attention to all the comments that are made at the public hearing this evening. I'm not going to be at the entire public hearing, because I've got a Hamden council meeting on their charter this evening. But, and I will be providing the Board of Select Persons with a full report on everything that was stated and how it fits into the charter, whether there are some issues that should be considered that come out of the public hearing. And I will also include the First Select, Selectwoman Lefkowitz's comments in that as well. So, what I don't cover here today, you will see in my document that I'll provide for you for your next meeting on Tuesday.
Sure. And then any. Just for clarification, too, you know, the Commission met for nine full months, and they spent a lot of time. Personally, I mean, I was somewhat involved. I came to some of the meetings in 2006 as a Board of Ed member at the time, because I didn't like the changes they were making to the Board of Ed, and lo and behold, they're changing it, so I just want to mention I was right. And, but I remember those meetings, and they didn't delve into the level of detail that you guys did. You know, they kind of did a few things. I mean, they never looked at the seal, they didn't look at a whole host of things, even modifying or modernizing our budget process. None of that stuff was looked at. It was Board of Ed terms and the four-year term for the First Select Person and a few other things. So, I understand that you guys ran out of time, because there was, there's a lot that still, I think, needs to be done. But again, I think there's certain, you know, there's certain pushback on things, and you have to go through the process, and I think you did a good job. Frankly, I think in 2006, I don't remember the presentations like you guys got from public policy people from the universities, and, I mean, that was really an interesting exercise to hear from other, you know, cost and all these other organizations, which I don't think happened 15 or whatever years ago. So, I think that you did a good job. I don't think you should say, we ran out of time. I mean, you're not, listen, you have lives, and you did this for nine months. And I think you delved into the areas, you tried to address some issues to try to make our government run a bit smoother and more collaboratively, and fix some little tweaks and problems in it. But, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean we don't have, we can't do it again, when I'm far away from here. I'm not kidding. But I think that it's good to review it in chunks. I don't think any commission's going to go and rip apart the whole charter and change it completely. So, I personally think you did a lot of good work, and you didn't get to everything, but you did a lot of work on the things you did get to.
I would like to add, if I may, you know, just to kind of clarify, and in terms, in all seriousness, the way it's stated, and maybe I didn't convey it clearly enough, but we, when we bucketed everything in terms of the issues that were addressed and into the areas of the charter, and we came up with a comprehensive agenda of what we were going to look at during the process. So, we did look at everything, and we made a conscious decision of what not to look at. So, it's not like we just left things undone. So, I mean, there is a document there of, and we did look at every article of the charter, but how deep we went into each article was just a function of a conscious decision of the body of whether or not we thought it was worthwhile or in kind of the spirit of the areas that we were going to look at. But there was a comprehensive document created in January of this year of everything that we were looking at by kind of categories, and we stuck to that. We posted that schedule, and I was adamant that after we came up with that schedule, we had a public hearing immediately after to make sure, and distributed it beforehand to make sure, it was our work plan, he called it, that we could hear from the public to make sure that we weren't missing anything. Somebody said, you know, oh, and it's all in there, and it's, you know, each article and the middle category is every category, every comment we had on it, including our own, including what we heard from the government agent, the areas of government that we.
And also the public, because he did insist on having a public comment session on our work plan.
Yeah. So, it's not like we just said, we're out of time, the last three articles, we're not going to look at at all. We looked at everything from A to Z. We made a work plan, and we made conscious decisions of how far to go into each of those categories, so. And this is what we've come up with, and I'm very confident about it, so.
Thanks, Brian. Do you want to just?
We also took a fairly deep look at recent and emerging trends around the state of Connecticut on a variety of different topics to try and figure out what was happening, what was changing elsewhere that we needed to look at and evaluate. And we deeply used outside expertise to help bring those issues to us, allow us to evaluate it and determine its implications to our town. And we used people from universities, from other towns, from agencies in Connecticut to better understand what was emerging, what was evolving, what was important, that we needed to bake that in within the confines of what is allowed within the state as far as town charters.
Thanks, John. So, do you want to try to address some of Nancy's things, so we could try to make the 5:15?
I actually.
And if I could make a comment, because I think it's helpful to frame it about, you know, not wanting perfect to your grandma, perfect in the way of good, and all of that is great, and talking about the trends, and, but I think what's, for me, I'm still trying to wrap my head around, is the goal, as stated from the onset, was very lofty, and it was, it's stated that it's been achieved, that this is simpler, it's more modern, it's a, it's not a goal of like, we're just trying to accomplish a few things, looking at the trends. You're, we're talking about a document as if it's a complete and finished thing, and it's decidedly not there yet for me with some of the language, and it's, so that's where I'm having trouble getting my head around, when we talk about, the First Select Woman had said the other day, it's, you know, for modernization. I still don't have language for that, and so my hope is at the end of this period, and when, after the public discussion, and then when the Board of Selectmen gets back together, because we are, again, going to own this when it goes through, it's going to be removed from this body, from the CRC, and I still don't see it yet. And so, that's what I'm trying to get my head around. So, it's perhaps philosophical, but.
Yeah, I think it is philosophical, but one of the things you need to look at, this is a constitution. Look at our federal constitution. By far, not a perfect document. By far, a document that is continuing to evolve, or devolve sometimes, depending on how the courts go, either way. But that's the nature of a governing document. A charter is never going to be a perfect document. I try. I spend a lot of my professional life working on these documents in different places. I'm doing my fourth in Hartford right now. I've done three in Waterbury. I've done three in New Britain, because they can't, you can't possibly accomplish everything you want to accomplish in a, in one given process. So, I don't think that was ever the intent, to do a comprehensive restructuring. So, but let me, let me explain a couple of things, and I think the Chair answered a couple of your questions in terms of how we did this. So, I think the questions, six and seven, you didn't number them, I numbered them in this process. Let's talk a little bit about some of the simple things, the errata. I will let you know on Tuesday, I will be spending a good deal of time on this over the weekend, on the errata, to make sure that we find anything. I found something today when I was looking at one of your sections. It was an ING that shouldn't have been there. And we will look for those, and we will.
And this in response to a question I had asked about, were there others? I just want to make sure people listening know the context.
It was the context that the Select Person was asking, are there others? There will be others. That's why we have on the cover of the document that we are continuing to look at this. I'm asking the town attorney in his spare time, which I, I'm not sure there is any, and I am doing it as well. I had an editor work on this as well, and we're going to continue to do it. The answer is, there have been no changes to the document since this document was submitted. It is not my authority, it's not the town attorney's authority to change the document. Our authority is to come back to you and say, we have found these things. We ask you to modify mainly errata things. We find something substantive, I want to find substantive before next week, because if we don't find substantive next week, it becomes, we become more limited when we bring it back to the CRC. I also, and I want to let everybody know, I will ask you in your resolution to allow us to continue to do it through the time they're looking at it, so it becomes another one of your recommendations, so that we use every possible moment in this document when it settles. Remember, this document only settled about a month ago. We were working on it actively a month ago. Those of you who know the legislature know that there's an implementer bill, right? That implementer bill is the thing that's done, is the garbage bill, right? I don't know if it's a garbage bill. It's the omnibus bill where everything in the world goes into.
Where all the rats live.
Where a lot of things, the demons, all sorts of things are implemented, okay? Brian will tell you this, the First Select Person will tell you this. What's one of the first things the legislature does, either in special session or the beginning of the next session? They fix the implementer bill. They correct the implementer bill. Because when you're writing something in real time, you're going to make mistakes. One of the hazards of my.
Guys, we're, yeah, we're running out of time. Can we get to the other questions?
No, this is not answering your question, because, because your question is about.
You're answering one. What's the other one? What's the other question?
There's 15, another 15.
Well, there's a lot of them.
You're not going to get there, so.
Yeah, you're not going to get there.
We're not going to get there, so.
We're going to go to 5:15, Tom, and then we're going to come back around 5:30, 5:35, and then whatever remaining questions are needed to be answered will be done on July 5th.
Yeah, I'll just follow up on it. So, I'm sorry, I hope I wasn't being too long-winded, but I was trying to answer the question. That's the reason we have that in there. We're not, we're not doing sleight of hand, we're not changing words. I assure you that.
It wasn't meant to assign intent.
I got that, I got that. And it should be.
All right, try to get through the questions.
Streamline. You talk about the document be twice as long, it's not quite twice as long. It's, it is 34,000 words compared to 22,000 words. 1,700 of those words are definitions that we added, and 7,900 of those words are annotations. So, a big chunk of the additional words in the document are things that we designed to give the public an ability to understand the historical derivations of the provisions of the document. Not everyone, there are new words. I said that earlier. There are new things in there, but I think, I'd like to think that most of the things that were proposed are things that are beneficial to the public in terms of clarification, accessibility, and those types of issues. And what makes it more user-friendly was another one of the questions. I think that the defined terms, which I've talked about quite a bit, again, the annotations, the uniform concepts and transparency, where we tried to bring everything into Article 1 that has uniform application throughout the document, that used to be scattered in the document, not new, but in a place where everybody understands that it exists. In Article 6, we established all the standards for board and commission members, and they were scattered throughout the document. I think that is, makes it more user-friendly, so the public can understand those things. I think that the budget process, I think that under the RTM section, the fact that we put the referenda process there shows the public where the process ends, that it flows from the RTM to a referenda if there is a referenda. The next question is, please provide overview of what makes this charter more modern, or how it lends itself to.
I think we talked about that.
Are you comfortable with the answer you got on that?
Yes.
Right.
Today.
I'm gonna, it's, yeah, it's 5:15, so we're going to break now, and whatever, those remaining questions can be answered on the 5th, when we have more of time to do that.